Open the pling board meeting for this evening, since we have a long agenda. I'll do the role and basically I'll stipulate unless anyone debates. We have a full board, so everybody's present and accounted for. Approval of the minutes for the June twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting, do we have a motion?
I move that we adopt the minutes from the June twelve, twenty twenty five meeting, mark second draft as submitted. I'll second it.
Okay, do we have any discussion? All right, seeing all in favor, all opposed, all right.
Tim was absent.
Oh, then you're.
Larry knows better than I do.
There you go. I correct that. All right, on the revised agenda, we got have the election of officers. I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that Don Span, he elected the chair.
All right, does anyone want to make a motion? Well, I guess we have to go with that. I was gonna say, should we do this full slate?
And Larry Brand, the vice president, vice chair.
Okay, all right, so why don't I let you take over then?
Any discussion? Seeing that, all in favor? Both, sir, unanimous.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion for vice chair?
I'm I nominate Scott Living.
We have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed, all right, goodness. All right, the first item we have is a site plan amendment. Did you want to say something?
Yes, so just disclosure to the board that I've had passed. I relationships with Weaver's and nothing current, but I have looked at this broadly that we're going to be discussing. So this, I don't feel there's any conflict with this rest. I don't want to act in private agreement, but I'm pursuing. But just full disclosure.
Does anyone on the board have any issue?
No.
All right, then. Thank you, Tim. All right, so we have site plan amendment. Kim and Kurt Weaver have submitted a site plan amendment application requesting to revise the site plan boundary on three thirty five Middlesex Road. Tax map R zero eight lot zero four seven C. And who's gonna present that?
Make a quick motion now, just first one. Having since the staff have reviewed it, determined it's completed, like to move the planning board concur with the staff for the application. It was requested in cycling and then another middlesex term by solo one to then submitted. And for the applications complete such that the board can proceed with substantive review identification and further action or information from which may be required from the application.
I'll second that motion.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all right. Then sir, please identify yourself and you may proceed.
Kurt Weaver, fifty nine murder of, up to me. So where you have the request for amendment to the solo farm. Originally it was proposed on forty acres or forty plus acres. And they're only operating within nineteen point eight seven acres. So we're just looking for an amendment to see if it can continue or be approved and continue to operate on nineteen point. Eighty seven acres versus the forty acres as a whole. It's already delineated and separated. By fence and boundaries as indicated in the plot plan that's been the weapon. So it's basically just an amendment to say that it will be operating from and as previously approved. As it's laid out in the plot.
Okay, my understanding staff had no comments and there are no concerns. And there are no waivers being requested, correct?
Do you agree?
No waivers being requested. All right, any questions from the board?
When this was before us before our agreement fails a lot. Was the original plan was the whole thing was going to be a solar pond?
I think at one point in time, they were thinking that they might do a larger plan, larger solar. Upon reviewing it and the southern exposure and the bridges and the different things that it existed. As well as some state legislation that said anything over twenty acres has to go through. Similar to what a major subdivision would have to go through versus a minor. So a lot of soul companies and scale back to be within the twenty acres. So the original was put together as the nineteen point eight seven acres. In that's the least the full parcel with the right to. At first option to purchase rooms through many land which they have given up that option.
And this one is fully up and running.
Yes.
Yep. Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
All right, sorry, I thought you were coming back for extensions, but then I realized which one it was. We had some that collapsed in, you know, size wise due to, I could say, the regulations, et cetera.
Okay, anything else, Larry?
I'm fine.
Anyone else over here? All right, then.
I had just more for. My own knowledge, so. So this remains one lot, we're not doing some subdivision at this point, because the leases set on part of it is twenty resident. Or twenty other acres, but it did from when. You wanted to do any subdivision or building comeback. Because the memo talks about some of. Presidential development, so.
Yeah.
Just mention it.
Exactly, yeah. Yep, that's all it is. It's just changing the what the boundary up because as it is. If anything changes with the site plan at all. From group has come back, despite removing. You know, the unused area from the site plan and then.
So it reverts back to what it was before the silver one, right?
Yeah. That's right, exactly. Which is just private property.
Yep.
All right, so no more questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I moved that the application to amend the site plan for middlesex term by solar tax mark. Tax map R zero eight lot forty seven C. Having satisfied to a football standards and site plans review order instructor one seventy five and zoning order instructor two twenty five. Recruit the staff recommended additions and findings identified in staff memo dated July ten point two five.
Second.
All right, Eric, get in first, all right. So we have a motion, a second, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we do have a public hearing coming up. Next item is public hearing subject in amendment preliminary plan. In a back pier, in a big river. Woodworks LLC has submitted a preliminary plan for subdivision amendment. For road extension and for residential lots on Emily Street tax map R zero one. Lot seventeen D dash one, seventeen B dash two and seventeen D dash three. So this is preliminary, we will open up to the public for a public hearing to the way out, so. It's only on two.
Yeah, I moved that the planning board concurs with the staff that the preliminary application materials for Emily Street. Extension subdivision amendment have been submitted and the applications completely. Such that the board have received with substantive review identification and further action or information which may be required to the application.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed, all right, thank you. So. Please go ahead and identify yourself.
Thank you, Joe Martin, the sidelines. All right, I'm just gonna share.
And Joe, during your discussion, if you would. I was trying to understand the comments about the ponds and the staff comments and those to that, so. If you could help me out with that, that would be great.
So just quick rundown of the project team, so I have that River Woodworks is the applicant. Site lines, the engineer and surveyor for the project. Atlantic Environmental did the wetlands delineations, they've since been acquired by Fight Catcher, but they were the initial delineators. And Mark Hampton Associates conducted number of bits on site to make sure there could be. Subject systems on each of the proposed plots. Also review process, so we've been for you for pre-app in April. We're here for you now for preliminary and hopefully coming back soon with final review. There will be some wetland impacts as a result of the project. These wetlands were actually impact previously, there was some clearing down on the property previous to the current owner acquiring it. And those wetland impacts were permitted under and after the fact permit. Back in twenty twenty four. We'll also need to get a permit from the Army Corps Engineers, there's some. Unknown at this point if that's already been acquired or not, I've been reaching out to the Army Corps trying to confirm that. I haven't heard from them yet, so we may have to submit a application to them or they may have already issued a permit, still trying to figure it out. Quick summary of the project, so the property is located in the R two zoning district. As I said, there was some previously previous clearing on the property, so it is partially cleared, partially wooded. The project will consist of the extension of Emily Street. And four new lots. The lots will be served by individual subject systems and there is a. Public water main on Emily Street that will be extended to serve the new houses as well. Part of the agreement that I'm up with with the. Town Fire Department was that instead of extending a larger diameter pipe for the water main. And installing a hydrant as part of this project. Instead, we're going to require that all the new houses will have residential sprinkler systems installed when they're constructed. And those systems will be tied into the the public water service that was extended. With the water main also will be extending underground power communications to serve the new houses as well. And then there will be a new stormer event system. Installed as part of this, so there's two. Two swales, as I'll show you on the plane in just a second, but there's two larger. Just large, but they're deeper swales. That run through the development area, there'll be two larger diameter culverts that are placing those to maintain the flow. Under the roadway. And then the runoff from the roadway itself will be directed to a new detention system. That will collect it, detain it, and then slowly release it to the adjacent wetlands. So reference to the comments, there's a couple of outstanding, well, there's a number of outstanding comments, but there's a couple of major ones. First one is the HOA docs, the attorneys are working on that right now. When I get to get a copy of that, I will forward the log review. And we will definitely have that as part of our final submission package as well. There was one comment from the peer review engineer and the public works director about the detention basin. Actually. So right now, if you look. The Emily Street is being extended. And just south of the new extension. Yep, right there is a detention basin that's proposed. There was concerns from the public works director and the town peer reviewer that since it's so close to that abundant property line on the east. That would be difficult to get in there and construct that properly. So what we're gonna be trying to do is. I don't know why, I'm gonna try to give at least a ten foot buffer between that property line and where the grading starts for that. Which may result in that detention basin stretching out a little bit and also getting a little deeper. We do have some capacity to deepen that a little bit. So I'm still working on that design right now, but the other thought was. To potentially ship that detention basin. To the. Other side of that lot, so there's kind of two buildable areas on that lot. Right now, we are building the detention base in one of them. And one's over there and thought maybe we just swap the two areas and the house would be located over the other side. Initially, we didn't do that because we wanted to give as much separation from existing houses on Emily Street to the proposed ones. Just to try to be good neighbors and try to give that buffer between uh between new existing houses. So that's kind of the major drainage comment we have to address, there's a number of other comments. Drainage and utility comments that we have to address, but those are kind of major. Go back a little bit. Anyone that doesn't know where this is located. So this is a river road is on the bottom of the. The aerial and then you have River View Drive extending up from there. And off River View Drive is Emily Street, which currently dead ends. And this property is located right off the end of that. That dead end, so just sending it into that. That red dashed rectangular.
So we don't have any issues with the distance for dead ends?
No, well. Well, no, there's a, there's a, no, there's no issue with the distance, but there is a, because dead ends aren't. Aren't permitted by right in the town, we are busting a waiver. And part of that waiver is the installation of the sprinkler systems. And. Yeah, except the weather.
So the waivers for how much?
For how long the road is, I have to look it up, but that stretch of valley is less than the, I guess, eighteen hundred feet, I believe that's max.
Yeah. So.
The memo says that it's over thirteen sixty five.
Yeah. Yeah, no matter what, so a waiver has to be requested, like no matter what, but. Past a certain limit, I I don't believe it's amicable, but it's under that limit.
And so this is the subdivision plans, again, it's it's all the lots are. Going to be accessed off the new extension, there's a cul-de-sac at the end of the road. The building envelopes for this property are are for the for the new all of the lots are fairly limited, so you're gonna have. Smaller, smaller lots, we're trying to preserve as many of the weapons as we can. Trying to avoid those impacts, we are impacting it for the road construction. But for the most part, the house lots themselves will be avoiding impacts to those those weapons. That's the site development plan I previously showed you. Tough to see at this scale, but there is a, I said. Water main being extended as part of this and there's underground, I would say, as well. And this is the planner profile. Don't do engineering plans, they don't mean anything to you, but. I just put on this to show it's the road itself is is a fairly gentle slope coming down off existing Emily Street. It's going off down at two and a half percent. And then going back out to the end of the extension at one percent, so it's a fairly gentle sloping road. There are two catch basins being installed in the new roadway and those will pick up the runoff. On the road and direct to the detention base.
So all those flow of stores. The develop from Emily Street, the existing.
So the existing Emily Street. It's kind of that high points, though, yeah, we're we're pitching away from it, yeah, yeah. And one of the questions too, from the peer review engineer with about if the. Watershed come to this property extends on the other side of the railroad. I did go up there and walk it, it does not, it's kind of just drains from the railroad. Suddenly towards property, but there is no offsite flow that's coming into this.
What are the lot sizes, what carries?
They vary from one to one and a half acres.
One good size?
So, yeah, they're good size, but I said the majority of them aren't built with weapons, so. You're gonna have fairly small limited areas where you can put the houses. But yeah, they are going to be spaced out. That's all I have in reference.
So is that dead end road, the only waiver?
I believe so, but and of course, because preliminary to waivers wouldn't be.
No, no, I understand us.
Yeah.
It had, it was in as part of the findings of fact to spike it up. Okay, so.
Really looking at, it would be able to show the the area of view, even though Alphonse is over there, it's all. Homes on each of all those lots, so there really isn't. Even future projects.
All right, any questions from the board? Preliminary for preliminary before we open up for public hearing.
Public Works Director, he's all. All settled to have an proposal instead of a.
Like a hammerhead, yeah. Yeah, and for. For reasons too, for getting at it with frontage for those lots, because when you have the hammerhead, you can't have any access off that hammerhead. And it was tough to get enough space to get the frontage, yeah, for those lots. But yeah, the one concern that the fire department had was that center area wasn't. Didn't restrict them from driving, it's not, it's just gonna be an accurate lawn area, so, but they have more than enough swim room to turn around. But they just want to make sure that area in the middle was like a mounded area that was. Walked.
Larry, do you have anything?
Not at present, Tony.
Okay, Andy. You guys, all right, then Joe, we'll open up for public. Public hearing is now open for any comments, questions, concerns. If you'd like to speak, please step up to the mic. Please identify yourself and state your address.
Yes, sir, my name is Paul Seporski Junior and I live at fifteen Alphonse Drive, my property of Buss. To the west there. Yeah, no, 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 on the other side.
Right there.
No, sir.
No, way to the left. That is the left, that's where Alphonse is.
That's it, okay.
Okay.
Now, I just heard him explain about his drainage proposal for. What's going on up there?
Yeah.
Now, my property, a bus at property and. Every sentence they've cut all them trees out of there. During a good storm or heavy rain. The fall and the winter, spring. That floods my property now, I've had many trees uprooted. What are your intentions? For that?
Sir, sir, please address your.
Oh, okay, well, I I would just like to know what the intentions are for the drainage coming up, because that's a hill right there.
Yeah.
Okay, now they're gonna go in there, they're gonna clear all that out, okay, make it nice and whatever. But what about the rest of it? Because that's all wetland down in there, I knew that when I bought that property. Okay, but until they cut them trees down in two thousand and nine. Everything was good, now I still can't use my property. Down, you know, on that side, so. Yeah, I want to know what's gonna be, I don't want it flooded anymore than it is. You know, because there's some construction going on, so. That would be mine.
Okay, you have anything else, because I'll ask him to address that.
No, sir, I don't have to think.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? You want to address that while the public hearing is still open?
So. I don't know exactly on the property where it's flowing, but so the. Majority of the property drains from the north, the railroad down towards, there's a. Stream located down at the southern end of the property that drains. Westernly off the site, probably onto onto his property. There is a small portion of the property in the northwest corner that does drain directly onto his property and doesn't drain to the south. That area though hasn't been cleared, that's the. The kind of area that's between the. Tree line and the railroad. I'll say for what we're doing for the development, we are, we did do a flooding analysis to show. The pre and post peak rates. And that includes the roadway, the development of the new houses, the lawns. And that, based on that, we are either reducing or maintaining the flow rates that were there previously. And that is currently under review by the town peer review engineer, but our analysis shows that thus far.
Would you mention the peer reviewer, the gentleman's concerns? So I'd like to see if that does need to be addressed. Any other questions, concerns, comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Karen Fillmer and I live right at the end of Emily Street, forty two Emily. And there is a drainage ditch that is right past my property. And I just want to be sure that that's, you may have already answered this, but is that drainage ditch going to remain there? It's not going to be anything built on that.
Right, again, I'll ask him to address that for us.
Okay, and I would like to know a couple other things, quick things, I'd like to know if there is an anticipated start date. For the building, the road, when all this starts and. I just have a concern that I'd like to express, there's a lot of small children that live in the area. And they're all used to riding their bikes, playing in the streets. The street and I am just concerned that. The trucks watch out for that, I'm sure the parents will as well, but. You know. That's my concern.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joe, you're back up?
Yeah.
But she asked about the drainage ditch, yeah, the start date and the and traffic concerns with the children.
So, this you said, forty two? Yeah, the south of the. Yeah, that right there?
Yes, one.
So here's a question, there there is a. On the. I guess if you're standing on the road looking at your house, on the left hand side, there's a ditch that drains towards the east. And there's a little bit on the other side of your driveway, it drains back towards. The development site, so yes, that would be picked up and brought into the into the detention basin, it's just a small. Very small drainage area that gets directed to that, but yes, that will not be filled in as part of this project. The construction traffic. Part of the start date depends on that Army Corps permit, because that can be somewhat lengthy process. I think the hope would be that construction can start this fall. Concerns on construction traffic. I I would say, you know, we work with a lot of different contractors that do work in the area. Generally, they do a pretty good job of making sure their their truck drivers follow traffic laws and. All that, unfortunately, we can't, just based on location of the site, we can't access it from a different. Lower volume road or anything like that, we're kind of held to accessing from Emily Street, but I will. Add that note or provide that note to any contractor that works on it.
All right, any other? Comments or questions or concerns? All right, seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. So any more questions or comments from the board and?
Anyway, I mean, I think probably it's the main, I mean, obviously that's tension part and the flows, so the key part. I think, can't remember back to when we first. Saw this, but I think part of this, the reason that. That lot, the lot on the south side was a double lot at the time. May have had something to do with the flow of detention in so long, being more states, but obviously. Four lots, it's the biggest project different from three. But I'm sure that focused here would be a real time. Look at what solutions come up with really.
All right, I did have. Before you go with a motion. On the suggestion motion number two, is that what we'll be doing? I I'd recommend that we, or says the applicant shall respond to number, item number two. Does the applicant shall respond to any technical comments identified the town's peer review. I don't disagree with that, but I added the words two and resolve any technical. Comments identified. Anything else?
Well, the only thing that I. Kind of like to add to a certain extent. Is under these suggested findings of fact, talks about other studies. And where we don't have. We don't have anything back from the town peer review engineer regarding the the flow study that you're talking about. I guess I'd just like to kind of leave that whole aspect open. Obviously, maybe everything will be fine with what the peer review engineer says. But. If not, what the peer review engineer said, we'd like a further study or a different study, we don't. We don't like that, and I won't leave. Option for future studies.
Okay. So you have a suggested. Condition you want to put there? I think to some, I think to some extent it does because it says technical review. On the peer review, I think would. Surface any of those other studies if necessary, but.
Well, I would put in on. Well, I would put in on. Or on the. Writing it. Or I would just add, uh, the board reserves the right to request further studies. Under section one ninety-one dash seven.
Taking that kind of on that. We go through this whole process. We have reviews, we have studies, and we go forward. I'm just hypothetically thinking here. And then what happens if that gentleman's property has more flooding? As a result, even if we've crossed our teeth and got it our eyes. Where's that liability lie? I just, I help me through this process. I'm just trying to make sure that. I mean, I I would feel horrible. Going through this and then having that happen, especially with more trees to be cut. And all, so I just, I'm just curious how how the, how does the town and how does the board and how does the developer handle? Situation like that.
We probably have to ask our select board, but.
Okay.
I mean, that's. Essentially. From, uh, all we can do is base our decisions on the code and on the expert input that we get.
Yes.
To the extent that there is an issue, then it needs to go to the select board who also establishes our policy. Right, so I think as. In the past, I've always told people, you need to get with your. Representative on the select board.
I could add just a small thing to that, just not more business of this project. I've had other. I've had phone calls from other other communities or or HOAs saying, hey, we've. Got the system or we we, it's not working right, or it's flooding, or we have all these issues. And most of the time when I go there, it's either, one, it wasn't as well for the plans. Or it hasn't been maintained and it's not working properly. And we had one situation down in English Fork. Where the code enforcement officer actually issued a zoning violation because they weren't maintaining it for their approval. So then, um, you know, they had so many days to address it before they were starting to find, but.
And we had situations where. Retention ponds weren't being maintained, which have been brought up and so forth. But basically, that goes to the coast officer. And and that organization and the support.
Okay, ready.
So you heard the. Item four. And maybe we should have.
Your pleasure, right?
Because you wrote it down, right? Um, and if you want, here's what I wrote. On item two. So do you have anything else, Joe?
Nope.
Okay. So Ford is ready, uh, I entertain a motion on this. And this would be per preliminary.
Okay. I will with the application for the Emily Street Extension Preliminary Subdivision Plan submitted by Canada, Canada River Woodworks LLC. For tax map R zero one, lot seventeen D dash one, seventeen D dash two, and seventeen D dash three. Be approved in accordance with section. One ninety-one dash three and one ninety-one dash five of the Topson Code with the following condition. One, the applicant shall revise the submitted plan set to provide the necessary sheets for final plan approval. Two, the applicant shall respond to and resolve any technical comments identified by the town's peer review engineer. Three, the applicant shall respond to and resolve staff comments. Four, the board reserves the right to request additional study under section one ninety-one dash seven.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed, alright, good, thank you. Alright. Thank you, Joe. Alright, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to workshop and. We'll be workshopping the recode articles two and eight.
What's the move here?
Second.
Any discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Alright. Or adjourn for workshop? Alright, um, prior to the workshop, I thank you. For your comments. Thank you, ma'am. Um, prior to the workshop beginning, uh, we do have some plans for signature. You guys would like to um. Sign that in advance.
For sure. Well, we're all sitting down right now. We have to stand up for some.
We can leave it for the end.
So we'll leave it to the.
Leave that for us.
Yes.
You really want those plans signed? You've talked about three hundred. Do we, do we walk out, aren't you?
Yes. I think he's gonna tackle lots of the parking lot if we do, don't. Can't forget.
So, can people move stairs up a little bit?
I was somewhere. Do we have this table perhaps?
Sure, that's, that'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah, we can set up some more tables, do I?
Well, yeah, there are five or six, I said.
You want maybe a second table?
Right in here.
Yeah, here's a seat here.
Right.
Uh. Tell them you just took their table away.
They're bringing out another one.
Think they need two.
These, these are way bigger. They're, they're much longer.
Alright. So now we're.
Just, oh, the condition is bigger. Alright.
Well, it was a forty-one in the back of the two.
Yep.
There we are, okay.
Yeah.
That is a real play. Is so bottom comes to me, I saw. It looks in mind. Okay, we, you want to share it? It's my choice.
Good job.
Eight plus better.
Dude.
Yeah. The problem comes with this.
Yeah.
Yeah, another chair moved too.
That.
Chair here, sorry, thanks.
So Susan started that up, but did Margaret leave the building?
What part?
Did Margaret?
Margaret, yes, Margaret resigned a few months ago.
Yeah. I thought I hadn't seen one.
Kind of April, yeah. And then, um. Who else?
Andy.
Andy more recently. Andy surgeon, yeah.
Oh.
Okay, yes, briefly, I think everyone knows who we are, if we ever bang in front of us. Why don't you tell everybody who you are? If we were, sir?
Yeah, Rich Schultz. Go around Williams Drive. Your DPix is the exception. Uh, Joe Bailey, I was on the update committee and uh. And then I couldn't let go and stayed on. Uh, yes, uh, I'm not saying, Susan wouldn't let you go. Fair enough.
Susan Ray Reeves, um, I live out off Forside Road and Win Pond, and uh, yeah, I was a late comer for the update committee, but then stayed on. To uh chair this. This body.
Pete, uh, Pete Pono, I live in Highland Green, and I've been on the CPIC committee for over two years now.
I'm Pam Belford, also from Highland Green, and I'm doing MIDI in January twenty twenty-four.
Cool. Good, thanks. Alright, Sky, you're gonna lead off?
Yeah, um, I'm gonna start it on this. This is the planning board's kind of um introduction. I think you guys discussed this before, but um, this is giving you the articles to the form-based code section of three third, which. I think is uh the most unique part of it and the um. Kind of probably most publicized aspect of it. Um, so I invited. And asked CPIC to be here tonight because they have put so much work into this for the past. Uh, three to four years. Um, and so I think that they're very qualified to speak about um. The reasoning behind these sections, so I think it would be good. Or to start out with that, and then we can get into more of the bitty gritty of. The code, does that sound good to everyone? Great, I was gonna bring up just. Do you want me to bring the slides up for you, Susan?
Sure.
These are very good.
So it all started with the twenty nineteen comp plan, um. And, you know, the, there are nine big ideas, and seven of them um point in a very direct way or an indirect way. To what we have undertaken with recode. Um. You know, we, we looked at the comp plan and thought about different options, and. At this point, there's not much point in rehashing history, four years of the work we've been doing. Um, but it seems like it might be helpful to kind of um. Remind people of some of the goals that exist, you know, that that we. Either realized in the beginning or we've embraced along the way, realizing that not only will. Recode help bring about, you know, some of the vision in that twenty nineteen plan. Um. But you know, there are a lot, there are benefits um that were not necessarily anticipated. Um, directly by the people involved in developing this plan. Um. I don't know if anybody on the planning board has been involved in updating one of our comp plans. Um, I'm, I'm sure some of you have. But this particular comp plan was, as we've sort of marked it, was the most robust. Participation in this plan that we've had so far. There's gonna be another one, just a few years, and hopefully we can break that. Record. I mean, people came out and had fun. You know, sort of having their input. There was a charrette for a week. And it, we compiled a lot of really great ideas. So rather than go over these in any kind of individual way.
Yeah.
Good way, um, you know, to us as an implementation committee. Obviously, streets for people. And so fostering social connections kind of work together around um, the, the, the reason why form-based code. Um, was suggested. Right within the plan by those consultants who have helped us to update the plan. Is that, you know, by creating mixed-use buildings. There's a more walkable community. What people wanted in streets for people is safer streets for walking or cycling and. Places where people just come across each other naturally and where there's sort of developed parks where people can mingle and gather. Um, so streets for people, fostering social connection, and then the big one was be deliberate about growth. I think everybody who was involved in updating the plans. You know, understood well that. Sort of growth and development is going to happen. It's, there's no. There's no way that's not gonna happen, but how can we sort of guide it? How can we be deliberate about it? Um, in a way that helps. The, the development and the growth to kind of. And here as best as possible to the vision that people have for our town. So that one, and then housing diversity, as we've worked on this for the past three years. Think there's nobody around who doesn't understand that housing is a desperate need. And um. I remember. Giving a presentation early on in this process, um, we TVOZI. And one of the members of the TVI board sort of talked about like, what do we really mean by housing diversity? And I have a feeling that people don't question that much anymore. I think there's a better understanding now. That, you know, we need workforce housing. It's not just affordable, but we also need places where empty nesters and older folks. Can stay in Topson, can have appropriate kinds of housing, so that the code. As you have it, um, tries to. Um, foster that, to encourage that, to make that possible, and to have increased density. Which also will increase our tax base, um, strengthen our tax base, never a bad idea. So some of those goals, just to go over it, obviously, the, the code is to align code, the goal is to align the code with Topson's. Latest comp plan. It's also, and I knew we've talked about this before, but um, it's a good point to kind of. Either this, just kind of streamline and simplify the current code. Um, the reason that we've taken on. The scope that we did, I mean, our role has been the town center, um, which, which comes up in articles two and eight, but. The, the reason why we've done it sort of townwide was because it was clear that. It had been a long time since they had done a really comprehensive review and a lot about zoning and coding had changed. And so why not have Topson, give Topson the opportunity to kind of. Um, reflect that purposes. And have a code that the planning board and staff. Can have an easier time dealing with, but of course, you're all professionals. It will also be an easier code to deal with for people who are just property owners, laypeople, so that's, that's another sort of major goal. Um, it's filled with graphics. Um, that's something new, um, that I hope will make it easier to read, easier to use. Um. And focusing, you know, initially, we, we looked, there are a couple of maps. In um, the material that I started prepared. We looked at like, where, where is this town center? You know, what are the boundaries of that? And without being rigid about both water and sewer, we basically. You know, used existing um zone boundaries and mapped out the area where. Infrastructure already exists, because it's stated clearly in the comp plan. To do our best as a town not to extend. Infrastructure into new areas at this point. Um, so to utilize and create more density where infrastructure already exists, so that's the. Colorful, less colorful on the right than the current code on the left. Um, so I think, you know, the other thing, just to kind of remind us as before you folks get. Dug into the um. The code itself. The, the code that we have is actually the. It's the second public version. The first public rollout happened at right around the town meeting. A year ago, so twenty twenty-four. Um, the committee was there at town meeting. We had a display and after the town meeting. Here in um, in the town office, um, staff has been replenishing flyers, um, people have. You know, come in and talked about it, and we had. Some sessions, many sessions before that that helped us get to that public rollout version of the, that draft. But. Right after that, that display and the, the draft was posted on the town website. Um, we organized, um, I think eight coffee with recode sessions. We had already had um, uh, office hours. With stakeholders where some, you know, both general and very specific feedback was given. Um, that was incorporated into that first draft and now more into this draft, so this is actually the second public draft that you're seeing. Um. We've put, had a big. Lot to read, a map. There have been videos um put on the town website, so anybody who's sort of wondering and wants to put ten or fifteen minutes into that. Can sort of hear about that, um, about what that town center recode is all about, what the goal is, what, you know, how to approach it. Um. And, and we've had, you know, workshops with you folks and as well as with the select board. So a lot of feedback has gone in to this process. I, I tried to tally up, not in a precise way, but I, I think we've had about five dozen people. Um, you know, from anywhere from um, just neighbors and ordinary citizens all the way up to the chair of the um. Board, the zoning board of appeals, um, so weighing in and giving some very. Board, the zoning board of appeals, um, so weighing in and giving some very specific feedback. Um, and um, it was quite a wonderful process to have. Um, our code enforcement officer look at it in a very thorough way. I mean, one of the reasons we actually took. The whole townwide approach to this um, is that it would, you know, there were a number of things, like a long list. That Tom had developed of inconsistent errors, missing.
I heard the owl talk.
Is it okay now?
I think it's coming back on. I'm glad it wasn't off during your actual meeting. I did get really nervous about that, so I think we're good.
I I retain well, you can keep going.
Yeah, um, where where was I? I knew when that owl just squawked and it was. Yeah, so Tom had put together a long list. Things that were inconsistent, errors, you know, missing information in the code, in the existing code. And we thought, let's take the opportunity to really clean this thing up and give the town a recode. So with your help. We're working through it and um, if there's anything that I've missed, you folks chime in. Um, people have been involved with varying amounts of time, but everybody's been involved in this process. Questions, additions?
So were you gonna? You you wrote a memo, were you gonna talk about that or? I'm gonna listen.
Um, I'm happy to speak about the memo. I think in the memo I laid out, you know. What this is, um, I talked a bit about the zones and why those may look a little bit different. I thought that the PowerPoint might have been the issue with the camera, but now I realize it was Susan's foot. Um, sorry. So I'll pull this back up, you can see it um. Yes, sorry Susan, um. So I, you know, that was a lot of what I went over is because there are a few small changes, um, the MUC has been divided into two zones. Um.
So this, before you go.
Yep.
Are we talking that? Because. Is that far a chapter two and eight or is it?
Yes, I would say that it is, yes. Um, so that has been split into two zones, um, and you can see on the. Center zones one, which is the more pastel version, um, that there's a blue, dark blue, that is um. Now the mixed transitional, thank you Susan, uh, mixed transitional, um, and there's also a small bit of that um. Up by Four Union, uh, by Union Park Road, which. Was changed for the Four Union Park development that came through, just to allow that to have the type. It was also kind of realized that there was a difference in buildings at that edge of the Union Park Road versus the front of it. Um, there's other small uh, boundaries that I think I covered in my memo, if you could just discuss that, I'm happy to go into it. I think the rest of my memo, I go over why this has been established, so.
I guess, maybe we can start with this?
Sure.
And did you do a table that shows this change as well, or is that?
Um, I kind of talked about here how they had changed, so the asterisks are next to the ones that are not completely encompassed.
Oh, oh, okay, so you're. I I guess I'd write up. You have MCU right, not rather than MUC.
Oops.
That's.
I've been thinking about the Avengers apologies.
That's why I missed it. So I guess. Let's look at your table and the chart, right, so. Let's stay on Main Street for just a second, right, so. The, I'll call it the, the point where things transitioned as far as the Main Street. Um, basically had. A village center, which it looks like has been totally eliminated with this. Um, and then part of what was. I I won't call it. Light industrial. But there's, I guess it would be part, part of what was light industrial is now part of. Upper Village, right? Now the villages encompass. Village Center, right, so. I guess, comment I made to myself was why, and then I'll get to my favorite topic, which is. I see no reason to take MUC and split it out, but. But I guess, can we talk about what the rationale is for doing that? And and how that's. How that both, I guess, helps us doing that.
Yeah, I think that um, currently we have lower, middle, lower village, middle village, and then village center. And part of the recode process was kind of cleaning up discrepancies, trying to make the language clear for people to understand. Since those fall along a north-south line, my understanding is that Upper Village was meant to parallel Lower Village. Um, and the small changes to that were to accommodate existing character that might not fit within its current zone.
So something that I I, maybe you can ask it differently, maybe Tommy can help. Things that were allowed with the previous one under a different name. What's not allowed, what is allowed, how how are we changed? By changing the the diagram.
Are you pointing to use, Don?
Use, that, what are, what are, what are we, I I get the form-based zone. What I'm trying to understand is where something was allowed as a use in Village Center, right? Are those uses encompassed over here or have we changed those uses? Where we've now got it. Within an upper village zone.
Sure, I can, I can answer that. You guys haven't gotten to Article Six yet, which is the the use table, which will cover that, if you'd like to discuss kind of the concept of it. Sure, but if you're getting into specifics, that will be discussed in Article Six.
Okay. We can discuss it in Article Six. But but we wanna approve, or we at least wanna get a good feeling for Article Two, so I guess somewhere along that line, we need to understand.
I can, I can clarify a little bit, so. Article Two is primarily about the. The character, the construction, the layout and the. Form of the building that's on the property. And. Those were meant to match up. We tried to stick this closely with the original. The current zone maps and the new. And then look at. The structures, the buildings that were in those zones. And. Oralate them with various building types that are. Assigned to each of those zones in the new map. Essentially, not. Not fundamentally changing. The character of those individual zones. Then. The idea with the, you know, with the code is that Article Two, where I believe. There's, um, if you look at the proportion, there's a lot more relying, you know, a lot more emphasis on. The form of the building. Layout of the property, the use of the the land. And a smaller emphasis on. The uses, what happens inside of those structures, so. You know, the answer to your question, Article Six is the, you know, the smaller focus, and that's the fundamental difference between the current and the current.
So you want a building that matches each area, let's say along the Main Street, with separate areas. And Article Two says, eh, we don't really care what's in that building. But it matches the other buildings.
Correct.
And then Article Six says.
Now we care.
Now we care what's in the building.
Correct, so, yeah, right.
And it's a matter of where the emphasis is. You know, the the current code that we're living by now has a lot of emphasis on use. It's not that use is out the window, but it's less emphasized in the Form-Based Code that you have here and other.
How the buildings work.
Right, so the buildings, how they look and how they relate to each other and how they relate to public spaces is kind of primary.
Some of that reminds me of the old song, all the houses made out of tiki-taki. I know you're all too young.
And it actually, actually, we'll say, it is, it's actually not that, it's not to say that each. Lot has to look the same. Actually, the the way, the reason for breaking out the different zones and for assigning the different building types. Is to allow for more flexibility in areas where. There's more room for that flexibility and allowing for. The different building types so that the developer can choose. Which building types. They can make work with the development they're envisioning. But if it still matches in with the cookbook. Or within the, within the parameters of Article Two. The goal, the ultimate goal is to make it easier to review. Comment, prove, prove objectively rather than subjectively. And gives, actually, the planning board an easier tool to work with to. Basically go through the checklist to see, all right, does the proposed development. Align with the criteria? The answer is yes, then. Relatively. You know, the intent is to make it simpler to review. If it doesn't, then the developer has the tools to choose. A different building type, a different, you know, they know what they're working with in particular, so that's, that's the idea. So I guess the question back to the board is like, okay, once you review and understand it, is that?
What I'm trying to figure out is. And I know I'm stuck on the.
On the map.
Well, not necessarily on the map, just on on red lines, right? Where are uses associated with it and how do you sit there and say, all right, this is how we've changed it? When we're talking to town meeting and saying, okay.
If we look. But you're talking about that some of. These locations have been pulled into what is now Upper Village.
And maybe Upper Village is great, I don't know.
But but that that part, you know, we can feel that when we look at the uses. The parts that got, there aren't that many parts that got pulled into Upper Village, the the.
No, no.
And yeah, DMV got pulled in, they're kind of, they're not much different than Toyota.
It's all these little pieces right here. Which. It's not around and let this in L I or L one. Whoever.
Which one are you referring, the little?
Yeah, what he just said.
Yeah.
Right?
This piece.
Right.
I guess, that's the DMV and.
DMV were both in L, uh, L one.
Right, so now they're more, you know, more aligned with what Main Street is, so than what.
Right.
What's.
Sandalundes.
And and then also the area of Union Park. Is being moved over to this transition zone because it's really a good transition area between. Upper Village and potentially whatever the not, we're not probably incorporating more.
Master. Yeah, that's the plan zone.
And that really fits in with a lot of what we've been doing during this, I'm not gonna say it's a delay, but you know, things have taken longer than any of us thought. Um, you know, with with the, for lack of a better term, the sandpiper tubes. Um, being fit in there, so the, you know, the changes are aligning what we've already been doing. We will have to, you know, look and spend a lot of time, as we've already talked about on second, uh, second six about uses, but. It seems like the the way the map has been set up and where they consider the root is is really logical. It makes a lot of sense with how the town exists right now.
Yeah. Build on that point, on that point, and that was also the, the the origin of the um. Mixed use, commercial mixed use. Was really the reason also for carving out the the extra, the darker blue in the MUC district. You know, the origin of that whole mixed use, uh, commercial mixed use zone was the, to be that buffer in transition between. Topsoil, so basically between.
Oh, that's the blue area.
The other blue area, the other one, yeah, park, right?
So the two of those kind of developed at the same time as.
Well, the buffer originally was where Mallet Woods is, right? We went ahead and. Put residential in Mallet Woods and now we're carving out more of the commercial. So, which is. Pretty well developed anyway, I'm not sure how much is left there to develop, uh, because this does impact future renovations, developments or whatever. Uh, where we've now. Taken more of that, what was the growth area for industrial and or at least commercial. Um, and are gonna have it more restrictive. And we're calling it the transition zone, so I still object to that one, that's. I haven't, I haven't changed on that, right?
Department, department there.
Yeah, right here.
Even though we we have a church there now, we have, it it's, it hasn't become what was.
I know one quicker. Took here that did turn into a church, you're right, I I don't disagree with that.
And there's a residential development, right, that hasn't been started yet, but it's been, I believe, approved.
I hear they're starting very soon.
Yay, so yes. The the idea is to have, there's a residential zone and then there's the commercial mixed use that to create a buffer between those.
But well, okay, we'll, we'll debate until cows come home.
Good.
The bottom line is, it's mostly developed, Danny did at Goodwill. Get approved to build those, he's been getting, working on the funding, hopefully he's almost there. Um, and um, we've visited that a number of times since this, I think it's a really good project, right? Uh, to the extent that. Danny would also be impacted by, if I understand it right, unless you've changed it, uh, of. What he can do with the Goodwill building if you were to want to do something different, uh, including, can he put. A drive-through there or is that drive-through go away, uh, what happens in that dump, which is again back to me asking about uses, so. And I, I guess I don't wanna focus on that. As much as just understand what all this is doing. But I I didn't see a need and I still don't see a need to take that out of what it was. But. You had it polished.
I'm just gonna say what's on my mind here, um, probably the one with the least amount of. Experience um, doing, this is my fourth year with the planning board, but this is still very, very new to me. Um, so this is gonna go to town meeting and the regular citizen is gonna have to vote on this. And I look at this, I'm an artist, so I'm very visual. And it's colorful and it's gray, but. It means nothing to me. I look at this and it doesn't tell me anything. It's purple, it's a little bit pink, whatever, and there's not even a, a key other than the legend on the right side. What's been there before. For me, I don't know if this exists, maybe it does, but if each of these zones can be pulled out to their own page, their own file or whatever. And we actually see what's there and what businesses are there, what ones have been there, what's in progress and, you know. And what's a potential. And that's not even getting into the uses, just, just to be able to see sort of where they are, what they do. Et cetera, like more detail. And I don't know if I'm the only one that feels that way, but I just, I look at this and. It makes no sense to me at all. So if I'm, it doesn't make sense to me, it is not gonna make sense to. Somebody that's gonna come to town meeting and vote on it, other than maybe where they live. And, but. How it all comes together, I mean, the overall map should have some detail in it, it should be able to tell you. What's there, you know, if it's mixed use, then what businesses are there, you know? What's allowed there with each of these colored areas? This is allowed, this isn't. Et cetera, et cetera, is that?
So we actually, yes, so it. I think, yeah, it needs to be. This map needs to be red in conjunction with table two, three, that does exactly what you just said, it it tells you which in each of those.
Orange area, mixed-use commercial, right? That that is.
That's our current zoning issue.
Right.
Yeah.
That's current, but, okay, and then, so you take that map out. Put it on its own page. What's there? List the businesses that are there, list what's there, so we can actually. Put a, you know, a name and a face to it. Um, and then what's allowed? This is allowed, this is, this is, this isn't, and then what's changing? What's been, what, you know, if if there's changes that are coming to that particular area, I would like to know, you know, just to be able to look on that page and say, yeah. This is what's proposed or this is what was and now is going to be, or whatever, I mean, I just. To look at that. Definitely tell me anything.
Does it tell you any more events?
No.
Okay.
No. That's to tell me anything, so.
It's, I mean, the the uses are not changing that much. The, what's, what's happening is the form. The, what's, what's happening is the form, and the forms aren't gonna change that much. The forms are, for the M U C or the mixed use are your main. Malls. And, and the structures that are there. The, the, the forms that are on Middle Village are, are gonna continue to look like my house. And Derek needs to be able to still say. So, I mean, the, the map itself is, is, the, the tough thing with the map, if I think, is, is true. Is trying to compare, compare existing to what's new and get comfortable with that. But even back to Don's point about the blue park drive. There's no differences in the use table, except that there are some conditional uses. That are allowed on park drive. Hospital. Uh, office and something else that aren't in the, in the Thompson Fair Mall. So there's, use wise is a little different, but I expect if we were to look at what the forms are. Is that the forms there are not gonna be a certain one, they're going to be something else.
I can admit that, maybe I misunderstand what's in there, but I, I guess. I've been to enough of the meetings and, and I know Danny's told me enough times that. He's got a problem with that and the impact. To Goodwill and whether he can continue doing what he's doing. Right, and then.
Starts the form.
Well, not, I wouldn't say the form necessarily, it's more what you can do in these different areas, right? I have heard on the other side. And what is. Over here. And I, I, if we could get different colors instead of three purples. Right, cuz that's part of, at least. My eyes aren't anywhere near as good as they used to be, and I have, I know where Lower Village is, so I can figure out that purple's that. But it looks like Upper Village and Commercial Mixed Use merge. Or connect, or hit each other at some point.
Yep.
And I. I think it's right across from the blue, right, but I'm not positive looking at this. Though maybe different colors would at least differentiate a little bit better, but in the, the lighter blue, um. And maybe we haven't gotten to it yet, but. There was a whole discussion about drive-throughs and where students could go and not go and. Streetscape and all the different things like that.
Yeah.
I honestly don't know where all that's ended up, I've been told you can now have drive-throughs and different things, but. The.
There is more flexibility built in.
Right, so I guess. You know, that's at least one piece of it, which I think. I like your idea.
The United States puzzle, the big one one, yes, all colored. That's what I'm looking at when I see this, now I take each piece out and I had to like, you know, if I was to draw on it, I'd do bullet points. And I, I like have all the detail basically on its own page.
I talked about bullet points and.
And then you put it back into the regular map.
What you said is better because it has the pictures to go with the bullet points, right?
And, and I'm sorry, I mean, I, I'm not trying to be difficult at all, but I come from the land of, um, the legislature. And when you are passing a bill, you need to get your ideas to someone and you need to be very specific and very layman's terms. Or else it's gonna go whoosh right over their head, so what we had was talking points. And, you know, a very bold headline, graphics, something that's just gonna like one page, any more than that and forget it. So if we're gonna bring this to town meeting and, and I'm gonna understand it to be able to vote and have input. I need to understand it. And I need to know, and, and if, if we have to take each one of these little.
It might be a good idea, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, you know, sometimes we're thinking about the end point. We're not there.
No.
No, we're here, we're here tonight, and my suggestion. For the planning board. Is to look at the code and read it, read it and. Read it again. Put the, put, get the questions coming and let the questions, where do I find that? And you'll find it, the re, the references are there. The illustrations are there, the charts are there.
I understand that this, that's a lot of information, but nobody.
How, how much do, does the ordinary citizen?
They're not gonna read it.
No, but they don't know about our current code either.
No, they don't.
And they don't emotionally care, the times when they do care are when they buy a new piece of property, right, and they come in and they say. What can I do with this property and what can my neighbor do over here and over there? Exactly.
Absolutely.
This code is gonna be easier for them to say what their neighbor can do and what they can do. And there's more flexibility in what they can do mo, many times, because right now we have minimum lot sizes. And that's kind of an irrelevant concept in the town center zones. So people, lots that weren't buildable are buildable now. So, I mean, my, my hope is that people want some flexibility.
What you're saying is that's a good news story, but what she's saying is how do we present that so that they understand what we're doing? And I, so I don't think. I, that's. And there's actually some good suggestions there, but anyway.
Here, here, what you're saying is exactly. Why it went in this direction. So, but unfortunately. Need a little bit of like introduction on how to read it and use it. And what I found very, cuz I had the same trouble.
Yeah.
And if we focus on Article Two, Article Two is about the types of buildings and it's a. Each building type is, is, it's just a two-page. Visual graphical description and then what you could say, okay. You know, I'm holding my hand of the, the village building. And if you look at page two eleven, you kind of get a picture of a gable end, you know. Structure similar to, you know, kind of what's over here near the Grange Building. Say, okay, where, where in town would that fit?
Absolutely, and I, I agree with you because I need real life.
Yep.
Examples.
Right.
I mean, like, I know that there's a look and feel up near Tim Hortons and the medical building and all of those, because I, I was here when they were built. And they all have a feel, they all have a look, so now if you take that to all these other little pieces of pie in town.
Sorry, so it all starts with the building type, so if we. Type and then you scratch your head and say, alright, well. Where, where in town do you think that would fit?
And check out page two nine, two dash nine.
And then, then you could look at it and say, okay. As you were saying, if you add a little bit more of a blow up of the map, he's, alright, okay, the. The little. The, the dentist's office that was just built in Tops and Fair Mall across from. You know, would this type of building fit there? And you would come into the, this table two and see, is that allowed in that area? If knowing that it's the mixed traditional or mixed transitional. Village type building, do you think, with, I mean, would. Something like that, Ross Street fit in that location? Is that kind of the best use of that property, the type of form? I, I guess that's a question for you.
Right.
Yes or no?
No, I hear, I hear what you're saying.
If, if your answer is no, it's, well, it's not allowed in that zone. As it is, cuz that's not the character of that.
And, and I know you guys, I mean, I've seen the little dots in that whole entire sheet of where things are allowed and where they aren't. And that's great.
But that's the challenge, educate.
Well, we've gotta look at that.
But that little exercise I went through, that, that's the fundamental question, hey, how do we educate? Ourselves and then the public.
We have to go, you have to go through it, you have to look through it one at a time.
For the thing, thing, devil's, devil's advocate for a second here. Is, uh, of course, all these areas in town, Lower Village, Middle Village, you know. Where, uh, DMV is and all of that. Uh, Portland, you know, that area. Those all groomed into that area the same way New England villages have always grown. Which is, and they just start developing.
Right.
So is there really a reason to be saying, okay, in this area, you could normally do this type of building? Uh, because we have some better idea for what belongs in certain places. That when somebody builds something, they usually build in the matching what is in that area. Because as well as the zoning and the type of use that's allowed in that area. So, devil's advocate, do you really do form based, um.
You just went, went back to use, but anyway.
Well, yeah, but it's, but it's a use, but the use controls what gets built.
Yeah.
If I'm building a house, I'm not building a Walmart, huh? Thank goodness.
But you're not building it in Tops and Fair Mall, are you?
No. Right.
Which is where the Walmart.
I'm building a town, a new, new town office. Going to big building.
I mean, we're not rehashing. Whether we're going form-based code.
Alright, well, actually, you actually, yes, yes, you are.
We are. You're, you're going to, you're gonna throw up four years of work and all the consultants work, and the fact that it was in. The comp plan, we, and people have been working on this, you wanna say we don't need it, I don't understand.
I'm just throwing that out because I know there has been comments regarding not needing form-based code. That's all. And yes. And, and, and if this is presentive for town meeting vote. Then, yep, you are asking the populace to endorse form-based building. So it is still on the table, right, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just.
It's definitely on the table for town meeting.
Yeah.
Think that if we're going to get to town meeting, we've gotta be moving forward. In this space and just working with what we have and not trying to say we're throwing it out.
I, I wasn't trying to say throwing it out.
The best word.
Well, we're supposed, were we supposed to be going over s, to sections and, and deciding what's changing, what isn't? And if it's changing, why?
This is all.
Okay, but, I mean, last, last week, two weeks ago, we went over those other sections, we had all these questions done, we just wanted to ask Tom to come. We're not even going over that, so, are we? Okay, alright, just trying to.
I, I don't wanna take too much longer because we'll forget all the questions we have.
Okay, so tonight is supposed to be sections two and eight, right?
But.
Okay.
Right.
And two is.
Two, two is where they were just going through, right?
Tops and Center Zones.
Which is essentially all this stuff.
And it's the growth area, we, we, we've been calling it the growth area because it's an area that already is equipped for development. It has water and sewer, it doesn't require additional investment or extension of the current systems. And it, what it does with this new code is it begins to, over time. This is something working into the future, it's gonna shape. Development with a lot of flexibility, but some guidelines. To reflect the goals and the vision, the comprehensive plan. Which a lot of people in the town put their input into. And this will bring that about. Now, I haven't heard one person, actually, we've had like about five dozen people who have commented in different ways. Someone, sometimes they came to Focke with Recode, they didn't even talk about the Tops and Center Zones, they wanted to talk about. Safety in a corner on Winter Street. Right, they, I mean, cuz everybody has their own concerns, but we were open to talking about anything they wanted to talk about. And I haven't heard anybody say, not, not one person, I think this form-based code thing is rubbish. Why are we doing this? Because as soon as they hear why we're doing it, they say, oh, okay. It's gonna help us create the vision in the comprehensive plan, it will take some time. And people will have a lot of flexibility, if you have a, a, a property that you own, right, you can actually. Look to see what zone that's in, what are the building types, Rick was sort of going through some of those specific building types. Whether those in, whether those are allowed in your, that zone, you no longer have to say, is my lot big enough to develop? You build, you know, whatever building type works on that, so, you know.
So, so. Yeah, you're saying a whole bunch of things, I think you're good, I.
I'm still lost, sorry.
No, but I, I think. And this isn't to not move forward with form-based zones.
This one or that one?
So these are mirrors of each other, so. This is, this is Lower Village in the Recode, this is currently Lower Village.
Okay, there it is, okay.
Yep, so I'm sorry I didn't make that clear to you, this is the new version of it. And I just wanna, I wanna address your map comments really quickly because I understand our current map viewer, which this is a screenshot from. Is not great, the town is under contract with a new G I S provider that will be better. You will be able to click on a parcel and you will be able to be brought to your zoning information in the code. But that is a little bit separate from Recode, we can't hold Recode up for that, I'm working on it, I'm trying. But we, we need to focus on the bits of Recode, I'm also so happy to talk about how we'll market it to people, but we have to decide if you guys are okay with this code before we can do that.
Well, I don't even know, I don't even know what you're asking me to do, like, I don't understand what. So, oop, oops, oh, sorry, I guess this is, I'm, I'm very lost with. What we're actually.
But the design, the concept of, uh, uh, design standards for, for buildings in certain areas.
In certain areas.
I would say the simple, yeah, I would say, we've kind of, we've kind of departed away from.
Yeah, the, the, the whole use thing, maybe, that's gonna be another. I'll pick the current use and. That's fine, so, so let's take a minute then. And maybe just talk through a couple of the pages.
Great, yeah.
Right? Right? And what you have in your book for those pages. The changes are to pass provisions of this. This document, right, so it's not, this is not reflective of changes to our firm, this is reflective of changes to the chain. Alright.
You tell me what page you're on.
And on page two point two. Because two point one basically is, is, that's your list of everything that's in there.
Dash, two dash.
Uh, two dash two, sorry.
Yep.
And on page two dash two starts with two point one zero.
And so I guess the question is, is how do you all feel about the zone descriptions, does anyone have issues with that section?
I have no issues with it. Just like the other sections we talked about before, I like, I like the text to explain what these zones are to. Every, everyday people, but yeah, this is describing what we're doing in these zones.
It's, and it's clear to you, yeah.
I'll just make a general comment about this, I haven't, I have to admit, I haven't read every page. But when I look at it, it looks great, I mean, I think everybody who's worked on this so far has done a great job. Graphically, it's an A plus, I mean, it reads so easy. To understand what's in here, it's just a matter of reading, and so that's what, that's obviously what we all have to do. But I think once people read it, it'll be easier to understand.
I'll expand on that, and, and embedded in here is a lot of references to where you're gonna find your, your next bit of information. Um, which is in the tables, it references the section that described. What it is you're looking at throughout the packs too, so.
And I'll just add on to that really quickly, it's a little bit hard to tell, but there is a slightly brighter blue. Um, underline, and that is just hyperlinks, so if you're in the code and you're in, um. Say you're in two point forty, um, point two, and you're trying, you're reading that, and then it says, hey, do you wanna look at table? Two dash two, you can just click on that, and when we have it uploaded to our online code, it will be brought right there. Currently, right now, I have to use Control F to find things on our code, that is. That is my most frequent usage, uh, is Control F. And sometimes you have to download the PDF to Control F so you can find things, right, so this is gonna be a lot better.
So these, the lighter blues, the everly.
Well, it's like a little brighter, honestly, um, so if you look under two dash forty, principal. References a change, that is a blue line change, and I'm sorry that they did blue line, I don't always get to speak with them about their colors and I understand concerns there. Um, and then fifteen dot ten is a, is a hyperlink, that's an example, if you can look at that section, you can see the differences in the colors there. Usually the hyperlinks are a section number for a tape.
That section was thirty four pages.
This is a big section, it is a new section, and it is trying to bring the goals. This is a big section. It is a new section and it is trying to bring the goals of the comp plan to life, which is, you know. A big, big part of comprehensive planning and growth management is taking the information in that. Planning board takes the information in that board, a comprehensive plan implementation committee in conjunction with a planning board. Takes the information in a comp plan and turns that into meaningful, actionable changes to our land ordinances, which is what we are attempting to do.
So I heard Scott talk about how it's clear language and Andy, you said it, it sounds like it's the visuals are very helpful. Like, when you get to page two dash three, that's an important table, that table two dash two, building regulations by zone. You know, then you're starting to get into the weeds. But it's where you can start looking at, okay, I'm in middle village. And. What, what do I have to think about? I wanna build. What do I think about in terms of setback? At the front street, right, onto Main Street. With my neighbors on the side street, you've got, you know, it's all very. Clear and it's easy to access, I think, with this chart, you know? And that's where, that's the intention, is to make it easy to reference.
So crossed out red is change?
Crossed out red and um, underlined dark blue are changes. The crossed out red is a change that was new to the code. In the spring of twenty twenty four, I kind of call the the red line changes, the Julie changes, because they are a result of work. That Julie was doing, I think, with you guys in workshops in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. So those are those. Meaningful changes. They are really important ones for you guys as a planning board to look at. The blue line changes are changes that are, you could call them the sky changes, because they came about in the spring of twenty twenty five. These are mostly related to issues that were brought up by the attorney, uh, when he read the code. If you guys remember your workshop with him last fall. Um, as well as some changes that Tom figured out when he read the code. There was a big technical review of the code last summer. That led to the blue line changes. There may be a few blue line changes in not may. There are some blue line changes in the center zones because he picked, did respond to some citizen concerns. While those technical reviews were happening because theirs was a little bit less, the entire code, and that is how we had decided to move forward, so.
And just to get back to where a lot of people have been talking about compared to the old. There have been changes versus our dimensional changes in the past. Majority of them are all to make things able to fit in the smaller of all. Uh, which is consistent with with the whole idea of the 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 center zone. Um, number of them haven't changed much at all, like the the site covers is what it's in our kernel. Zoning and a part of that is because that got into the current zoning due to this process. So, uh, but the others have changed, but they've gotten. Potentially less, so you could get more of of these slots and have. Have a presence on Main Street type than that, uh.
You can put a shed right up on the street now, Scott.
So how far back can you put it in the street?
Are there a number of building lots that are currently not buildable?
Yes.
Because of the refer regulations.
Because there's a minimum lot size and this does not have that.
Yeah, I know it doesn't have that.
Yeah, so.
I just didn't know.
That would be a good thing, right, for those people who own those lots.
Right.
But people own the lots, maybe not so much for the person next door, but. You know, cause you.
No, it's, I think it's, I think it gets regarded as a good thing, right? And so it should be, uh. The list of both, so these are the advantages of doing this, right? But, yeah, so. Building height, right? We, that's all in this stretch has always been kind of an issue. And so building heights over here, that seem to talk about.
I do wanna give a little br- uh, introduction to building height for the center zones. Um, the consultants have tried to build in some flexibility in the center zones by allowing the planning board to grant waivers. That is not allowable under main state statutes. C P I C has, is currently, C P I C me and the consultants are currently working to put some more flexibility back in. To allow an extra story of height in some places on some buildings, if certain criteria are met, which is an allowable way to allow that. Um, we currently have that in our code where if you have um, structured parking within your building, you can get an extra. Um, I think it's in our current code, we have height as feet, so it's, I think, extra fifteen feet. Um, in this code, it would be an extra story. So I do just wanna note that, that of the center zones, building height is probably the most unfinished bit of it. We are currently working on it and it's just been in response to the attorney's comments. So feel free to discuss it, but I didn't want you all to know that before you did.
As a thing to you, Tom.
All right, yeah.
If you know what we've been through, the height goes on there.
It it's kind of, yeah, it's all over the place. I I didn't see it as an issue within the center.
Oh, no, I I already thinking, no, just thinking we've. Dunked around with. It was down East Building being a heights based on whatever, and then we ended up changing some heights.
Changed it if, because we never had tall buildings before.
Right, so anyway, we've sort of evolved with height and I just wanted to work. Let's put it fast and compare where we think we're at.
Maybe look at two dash twelve.
There was one back in here.
And two dash fourteen.
It looks like each table had a section, right?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, actually, those are. It's, yeah, each building type.
As it.
Has.
Okay.
A different height.
And and these.
They're in stories correctly because. Depending on the building type. There's minor fluctuations in the call. All in the full story.
Right, so so to to your. Question that the. Height by definition has has been changing, been a moving target. So here it's by story. Which doesn't have anything to do with the.
And the story height has a range, you know, so.
So that was our issue or the issue, uh. The height definition limited stories and and it's been addressed here.
Tom, is the minimum of stories gonna be um, better for you on your, on your mind than the?
I think it 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 won't matter from where or another.
Well, are people changing pitches and things like that because of uh, requisitions or uh?
They haven't.
They haven't.
It's just, height height's never been. A real concern to me too, we were approached with the, you know, the four story building.
Yeah, right, yeah. Which was approved for John, John Wackleski.
Yeah. I I will throw one thing up, since we're in the just here to make decisions. In the, in table two two. Site probably. We do allow. But that's our. Impervious, we've needed rented residential essentially in the current. I don't know, that's appropriate of center zones.
Say that again, Tom. So you're looking at table two dash two.
Number six, line six.
Yeah, yep.
In our, in our current ordinance, we brought in site coverage, other than, then we uh, just dismayed, I think it was, we amended out of. Site covered cars for residential.
Right.
No.
There's no lot, lot area requirements.
Wasn't.
Maybe appropriate. Or not amended.
Are those in the residential zones?
Or can, can I ask?
Yeah.
Um, so currently we have site coverage as a blanket requirement in Thompson. It was really onerous on single family and duplex, not not. I'm just gonna clarify that because multi-family still does have to apply to it. Um, so it's single family and duplex, which are not required to do site plan. Um, do not have to adhere to site coverage requirements currently in all zones in Thompson, because that's the way our current table is. I think Tom's question is very pertinent here, and I apologize, it hadn't been brought up before. Um, I think that we'll want to continue that change that we made this May for the zones outside of the center zones, because that's where. It fits, but it it should probably be determined if we would like to exempt single family and duplex. Um, from the site coverage in the center zones. Did that get it, Tom?
That's it.
So looking at, you know, residential units. In the use table, that that's something that we can cross-reference at some point and make that exemption for. Single family and duplex.
If if it's appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, that's what I was saying.
And if it was, the change was made because it was particularly onerous.
It would have been, you could do it right.
Yeah, and we don't want that to.
You brought that up.
For the other zone.
Right.
Yeah, but. Yeah, I think it would be applies.
Yeah, like, I don't think that.
Note taken. Thank you.
Do whatever you want.
You just, you just try it. Get me back in front of the board. Okay, let's say you folks.
I'm, I'm good. And just to clarify, I'm not against the building times.
Good.
Proportions.
Yeah, I just. My saying devil's advocate, so you know.
So.
However, I'm glad, so.
Not necessarily this chapter, but. It was in our zones. Remember Danny's project and you were looking about that.
The street?
Across the street. You have that example sort of. Built out to the latest version, how that.
I'm not sure what you mean by built.
Well, sort of laid out. To show as an example of of how it works there.
That would be an interesting way to look at this, is if we actually pulled up those, those plans, that you had, the plans and the elevations. And compare that to what this says he can do, and so we can say. Is what he proposed originally, actually, does that fall, fall in line with this or not? And then it's understand.
That's.
Okay.
Yeah.
One of the things that was changed as a result of feedback was, um, that's a fairly large lot. You know, I think it's four point two acres or something like that. Not maybe every square inch building, but it's four acres. And we had had. I think it was four acres was the minimum to trigger, um, um, uh. What are we calling it?
Master plan.
Master plan development, thank you. And people said, that's, that's a little too stringent, so we've increased that to six acres. So you, you know, you don't have to do it that way, although you can. And the consulting worked with Danny. To show him that by using a master plan development tool, you can actually create roads and a street. In order to create a front street in there, um, if you wanted to, to create some.
So you have more road frontage, but I, again. That would be an interesting, again. Demonstration of people, here's what can be done with this code, right, right across the street.
Yeah, and I.
And I think you've got most of it and. Already created. I I just don't know.
That's a bit compared to the uh. This current issue, but I know it was with the first one.
To be honest, it hasn't been per se, but we did look in the use table and we made sure that we modified the use table. Uh, so that. That question would work because we understand that this area um, can accommodate what's called a general building. So you can do the general building there. Danny will be happy.
I'm curious, not just about the actual like site plan, but the buildings themselves, you know? The form of the buildings, the way they're designed.
Yep.
How does that pair to what is in here? And I wanna see him side by side, that's so I can understand.
What what he means?
Well.
Like what compared to what's in here?
Yeah, so like I just wanna, if I, if I could see those elevations that he had developed.
Oh, oh.
And then read this and say, oh, does he have, you know, I mean, pull this up.
Didn't somebody do, I'll do something for Sue Beck.
We had a workshop with you folks.
Like that?
And and Rod Malansa was here. It was May, twenty twenty two.
I was gonna say, that was a long time ago.
Yeah, that's how long it's been.
That's why I said it could have been dusted off.
Yeah, so for example, like, um. Figure two dot seven O dash A village building diagramatic elevation.
Yep.
It has building segments, connecting segments.
Yep.
So I wanna look at his drawing and say, does he have the right building segments? Are they in the right place? You know, does the, does the roof line match what is in here? Those are the kind of things that I just wanted to understand.
Well, you know, it, I think the thing, especially for somebody like yourself, who's an architect, right? To be able to look at this rather than Danny's building. Cause Danny didn't use this to create his building, right? But to to look at this from a skilled professional point of view and say, does this make sense?
Right.
To you. And Danny has a choice. He has the size lot he has. It's located where it is, and he has choices of different types of buildings he can use. And and he has all the flexibility I think that he wants. You know, we don't have him here, and he hasn't, as far as I know, I don't think he's done a site plan. Has he? For that? No. Right, so.
He hasn't been back to.
The part and the person need to get kind of.
There's something he's thinking about over there.
Right.
I just talked to him the other day.
Yeah.
Cause I had an inquiry about it.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
There is the flexibility that he wants done.
I hesitant to say, cause I don't know what the answer would be, I'm gonna ask it and be. Doing a similar thing, exercise on existing buildings, just as, as an exercise, how to interpret the code and see how. The approval of existing developments under the current code compared to approval. Look, the most, it's a, you know, it's a. More the exercise to go through the scene.
Right.
That was an exercise that we did. It was three years ago now. And I think it was, I I actually saw. Up there, an aha moment take place as people were looking at like, wow, this would be so much easier. To review and approve a site plan with this new code. It really was. You've probably forgotten. But I think it's, it's meant, it's meant to be.
Larry wasn't here.
I was here.
I I was just kidding. No, and that's why I brought it up, that I thought it would be an interesting.
Yeah.
Look, where we're asked.
Yeah.
In comparison to that.
But you're right, there is the flexibility as far as different building types within the area, but all would fit. With what we have.
So are we making progress page by page or what?
Please skip to one second. Did we?
Everyone's section eight.
You can move on, um. We're going on two hours, I'm not. Sure how much longer we're gonna be able to, uh.
I will say you guys have another workshop scheduled to work on names. I didn't think you could do it in one night. This is a big thing, so August uh, fourteenth is scheduled for these same two articles. I lumped them together since they're very related. Um, I think article eight is just a huge breath of fresh air after you get through article two, because you're like, oh. It's just architectural, you know, materials.
Article eight.
Sorry, right, I'm sorry.
Article eight has a lot of nice pictures. It's like eight or nine pages long, so.
Breath of fresh air.
I actually.
We have received no citizen comments on article eight, just doesn't have quite.
Well, no, and I can see why, right?
Well, we did incorporate a number of developer comments.
Did it?
About material.
I don't wanna oversimplify it, but if you look at it, the only issues that I, and I wouldn't call it my issue, but have the developers. Um, bought into some of the materials and that kind of stuff, because I know that was one of their concerns. Be about being able, what materials I could and couldn't use. Um, and this does get into at least. The side and interiors and so forth. Um, but that being said, in general, article eight actually comes across the. I I don't go personally more with article two.
Only because of the. Just, is that, is that the only, is that the only area of article two? The reason I'm asking dog is that I, I really don't have a problem with article two or article eight. I won't be here on August fourteenth, but.
Okay.
It's a good thing you have no problems. With these.
No, I.
But I mean, article eight makes sense to me because of the building types in article two. So we, you know, if you have a certain building type, then you should have a certain facade type of period.
Yeah, see, I I you dictating what materials can be used. From the planning board?
Right, our decision. Not our decision until they're in here, then we say you gotta use it.
Yeah, and do we have any idea how much the cost of those things are?
It's all expensive. These things for.
Come on, guys, I mean, I mean seriously, right? And that's why I'm mad, right? It's one thing to say. You know.
But what I mean. You know, I'm not sure, it seems like it's pretty comprehensive list of them.
Isn't that policy? It's a it's a policy decision, isn't it? I mean.
Which is your purview?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um I will bring your attention to table eight one. Um wood composite was added as part of the Julie edits, which I'm guessing was an attempt. To allow a little bit more uh affordability and flexibility to the architectural materials used because wood composite is a popular. Afford more affordable choice, um whoever said it is right, building materials just aren't affordable in a general sense right now, um which is why we're struggling. Um but I do, I do believe that that was added to address that comment, and I know Leslie has been asked that before and been able to point out that these ones fit. This one doesn't, you can, you can make it work. We're not trying to make things worse.
There's a waiver provision that's still in here. Eight ten three, so.
Yeah.
And my only concern, and I think it could be addressed by waiver, new products come on the market. That are similar to these, that would be acceptable, then it can be approved through the waiver process.
Yep, you know.
I agree.
I mean, basically, this is a, our understanding is this is essentially a living document, right? And uh we anticipate that things will change and there will have to be changes made over time.
With the fine living, then that still means has to go back to the. Town meeting to get approved, right?
The change will be very small at that point and they will be tested out, you know, and they're.
My only comment was, I think I like chapter eight. I have heard in a lot of comments about. Hating materials. That doesn't mind doing that, I'm not sure I do. Think it should be dictating.
Uh I think no one deserves. Aren't included in your final citing.
There's only so many materials he can use.
I agree, I I mean, I don't know the specifics, I wasn't at that meeting. Right, but I.
Yeah.
Was told materials was a problem, right, so. If we wanna ignore it, then that's fine, right?
Hey, I don't I'm not sure what else you can find.
Well, Lionel's not there.
Alright.
That's the only one I use, usually elephants are not there.
So you're out, out of luck, Scott.
Wait, wait. They're made of wood.
If I'm missing an inside joke. Of these pounds.
Not there, no one. Right.
They just need thirty minutes.
Yeah, they.
Well, yeah, I think if we are gonna wrap at eight thirty, but.
I would wanna know what isn't allowed materials versus what is.
That would help, it would.
Because I'm not a builder, I'm not a developer. And I would wanna know if we're not allowing something, why aren't we allowing it? That's all, and if it makes sense, but.
I agree with that. I feel like that that should be at least to us before we. Ask this, it's just to understand the list of uh what we don't wanna see. Well, glass is not on the list as a major facade material.
Why, why can't it be?
Well, I kind of Vegas, you're right, somebody could design a glass box. We not, are we prohibiting glass boxes?
Apple comes to town, you know, not not joking, right? They make glass buildings.
That's on page two.
This is eight.
What did you say? Those have glass curtain.
It's under the minor facade material.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Oh, okay.
But I guess is there, are there things that aren't allowed? That would probably.
I wouldn't even need to see it if somebody just wants to list off some things that you don't want around, just help.
Well, the picture, I mean, the picture at the bottom of on page four. With I, which is the last thirty hour. Pretty much covers any glass front building ever.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Which one? I, I.
Page dash four.
Yes, I.
I, just the the glass curtain wall, yeah, reference.
So so yes, let's stay with the glass curtain wall and I really don't wanna labor this. But if you look. Glass curtain wall, I, which it's got a picture. Then says. Allowed on building types, so it's restricted to general building, workshop warehouse and civic buildings only. What? So that does exclude at least some because others say all. Um and then it says maximum amount on each facade fifteen percent, so your glass curtain wall. Looks like a lot more than fifteen percent, that's just deceiving, right?
It does, actually.
So, Don, um the the concerns that you've heard out there, the industry, um what are the materials that they wanna be able to use that is great?
I have, I I haven't gotten. What I've heard is is.
Yeah.
That we're being dictated at what materials we can buy, we're having enough trouble with supply chain and getting materials and getting employees. Um to then be told here's what you're gonna build these buildings out of, right? Uh it it's just one of the general.
Yeah, it should be like, it would be nice to hear from those people that are saying that to you, like, what is it that you'd like to?
But my, and and maybe we need to do more in detail, but if you just take the glass curtain wall again. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, it does. Re- restrict, it's only certain buildings and it's only fifteen percent.
So where?
And if anything else, we should change the picture, cause the picture doesn't represent.
Fifteen percent is just a window.
Right, so. That that if I were to really get in into this one, yes, I would wanna look at these percentages and why.
Right.
That's the, absolutely, we want you to do that. Um I circled it and made a made a note.
I just wanna note though also eight ten three is luckily like basically the one part of the code that did not have to get rid of its waivers. So you guys as the planning board have a lot of ability to allow something else um beyond what is listed here because these are. Um not dimensional uh design standards um which can be waived. And so if the Apple Store wanted to come to town, that would probably be an instance of waivers. Quite honestly, and that's why the it's important that they're still allowed here, and I think it's why the state statute does allow design waivers is because they understand. That that can be a little bit more of a case by case basis.
Right, so we'd have to waiver both the allowed building type. And the. Maximum amount.
Percentage.
So we have two waivers for the Apple Store.
Do you know something?
No, no, not at all, I just. My my only point there is this that. I appreciate the fact we have, it sounds like they have a lot more flexibility with waivers, right? The flip side is. We should try not to put ourselves where we have to use waivers all the time.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Because then, in my opinion, it's subjective to who is on the board and not objective to what's in the code.
Understood. I think I'm genuinely wondering if there'd be a lot of instances besides an apple store that would need that much glass.
So I was using Apple like, let's say. Modern contemporary, um you know, like new like Tesla comes to town, I don't know, just pick somebody that's like. New age technology type of developer.
No, I totally get it, and I think just the question I'm trying to pose to you is, you know, how many times would we see that happen?
I don't. Do any of us know?
No, I know, I understand that, but I'm trying to say that I don't think in a lot of main towns you see a whole lot of buildings that look like that, so it might only happen a couple of times. You have the ability. To approve it. But the comp plan did lay out people being interested in keeping a certain character that is not, you know, all of that building.
Starting with the baseline, we we spent an hour today, what ifing. Very small subject. So you could start with the baseline, you can adjust this when it's needed, and then if you see yourself waving certain things, just codify them. At later date.
Agreed.
Okay. Alright, so. Our next workshop is. Same topic.
Yes, um well, if you guys would like to come back to these ones and discuss them more, um we have August fourteenth locked off for that. If my board feels that they need more time on this.
What was it like?
And come back and give us some comments.
Great.
So, yeah.
We'll consider this one the introduction and next time you guys are gonna read it with a fine tooth comb and come with more specific questions. Instances and you know, this one line is confusing to me, um. And that's great, and I did just wanna note, Carrie, if you are at all confused while you're reading this, please feel free to give me a call. I'm always happy to talk through it. I do understand that this is, you know, this is what I do professionally, day in and day out. So I get it, and I am here for you guys as a resource.
No, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Good, thank you and and thank you all.
And we do.
Some of us did repay, yes.
No bragging, Larry. Yes.
Next time, can we get a.